Called a meeting to order for the Kingman Clean City Commission on Thursday, June 17, 2021. We'll have a real call, please.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Present.
Commissioner Woods.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Ferry.
Present.
Commissioner, Chairperson Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Obergeis is excused.
Okay.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Have everybody had a chance to read the minutes for the regular meeting for April 15th and May 20?
You want ahead or you side?
Pretty allegiance.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
That's a good idea. All right, could everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, now we're ready for the approval of the minutes. Consideration of the April 15, 2021, regular minute, meeting minutes and the May 20, 21, regular meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review those and have any changes, additions, spellings, what have you?
I've read them. I have no corrections or additions.
Anybody else?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Okay, both minutes at one time?
Last one.
Okay. We have a motion to consider the regular minutes for May 20 and April 15. And all in favor? Oh, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Farah? All right, thank you for the second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? All right. Though for pass. All right, item two is consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not be, need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for a consideration decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431 at all. All right, and each speaker will be given three minutes to comment. And all comments will be shared with the commission and attached to the minutes of the meeting. Members of the public can watch or listen to the meeting on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Is there any public comments? Anybody online? We have one. Yep, come up to the microphone and speak into the microphone and state your name and...
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Mike Case. This is my first time ever being at a council board, and so I just got a little bit of something to say here. About three years ago, my wife and I bought a home in the historic part of Kingman. The property had been empty for about three years prior to us buying it. We needed to clean up the yard and do some repairs to the home. We hadn't fully moved into this area until we could sell our other home because we had, weren't financially able to do the repairs. We have noticed in the neighborhood that we live in, there are several rentals on both sides of us. The landlords apparently are not willing to keep their properties up. We are finding that there is old furniture and other debris put out at, at or close to the curb. Directly across the street from us, there is a vehicle with Oregon plates that's been there parked and doesn't run. It appears it's being used as storage and attracts feral cats because the windows are always down. We know for sure that it has been there and not moved for two years. We've been at our place for two years. It's on a public paved street. The adjoining neighbor has said that it's been there for almost three years. I am just wondering, what is the city code for something like this? We've called Neighborhood Services, but they can't seem to find the address we give them. It's kind of a mystery. The property has one address on the mailbox where they get their mail and no address on the building. And as far as we can tell, the city has no idea where this address is. We have found it on the county site, which shows even a different address. So how do we go about helping to clean up our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, any other public comments, online or present? All righty. We'll go on to item three of reports. We have a composting presentation by Linda Reddick from the Arizona Master Gardeners, and she'll provide us some information.
Chairman, members of the commission, as the chairman just stated, we have a composting presentation. Linda Reddick is here, so I will turn it over to her. Thank you.
Did I say good evening or afternoon? One or the other. I am Linda Reddick, master gardener in Mojave County, and we work through University of Arizona out of the local extension office. And when Sarah called me, I told her, gee, this is usually an hour and a half to two hours. And she said, well, can you get it down to 15 or 20 minutes? And I'm like, okay, you're gonna get basically a real thumbnail presentation. Anyhow, compost is called black gold because it is extremely valuable. And it is actually just what Mother Nature has done for eons. You know, if we can go up to the high country around Plakstaff, look at the beautiful forests and the wildflowers, all that compost Mother Nature did. So all we're gonna try and do is imitate Mother Nature. In 2018, the EPA did a study that says 24% of human municipal waste is from food and lawn trimmings. 24%. And that's approximately 200 pounds of organic kitchen waste every year, which is nothing but a waste. Compost is really simple. We only need four ingredients. We need some greens, which is your nitrogen, and that's all your kitchen scraps. We need some browns for the carbon. We need some moisture, very key important point, and we need air. There's a lot of composting methods out there that are talking about becoming anaerobic. That is not a good thing. An anaerobic composting thing can cause and will cause methane gas. Very dangerous to work around, and they wanted us to do that, especially at some of the schools. And I said, no, 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 we do not do trash bag composting because it, the air is trapped, and that can cause methane gas. Putting not only children, but people and adults to, at risk. Okay, why, why do it? Why bother? Because it does take a little effort because it saves water, it holds the moisture into the soil, reduces runoff. Um, I forgot to bring it. Got the black gold on the chair. I'll pass it around, and you can tell when you add just a wee bit of moisture, it just soaks it up and it holds it. If you open a compost container and it has a strong odor, it wasn't ready, wasn't processed totally. A good compost should just have an earthy smell, and the actual shade of it can go to dark, dark brown to black. Okay, it benefits the environment by recycling everything and keeping it out of the landfill. It reduces the need for soil conditioners and fertilizers, so it's a natural fertilizer. There are other benefits. There are 100,000 microorganisms in two tablespoons of compost. Yes, they are micro and macro. They are so small, it takes an amazing magnifying to see them, but they're there, which helps the plants. It feeds the roots of the plants. The organisms work in conjunction with the plants. They pull the nutrients out of the soil. The plants suck up the nutrients back from them, and then the plants send back a sugar compound to feed the microorganisms. So it's a happy little revolving circle, mutual admiration society. In Arizona, we have less than 1% organic in our soils, especially in Mojave Desert. So we desperately need to put some organic material back in there. It definitely is a very slow release fertilizer. I know everybody likes to go out and buy fertilizer, spray it out there, and do like some of the commercials say, oh, in 24 hours, it'll turn green from the nitrogen. Well, it may, but it's not gonna stay that way for long. It's gonna dissipate. The compost definitely assists in plant growth, plant health, and to the beneficial insects. Things you don't think about. But it'll lighten up clay soils, it'll make sandy soils more growable. It will attract and feed earthworms, and earthworms are not native to Mojave County. Anything you find here, somebody has transplanted here. It helps balance the pH. I don't know if any of you have grown much, but the pH factor is the acidity or alkalinity of the soil we're working with. And there's a lot of things that will not grow in the alkaline soil. Compost will help balance that out naturally. And it protects the plants from drought and freezes, which is really important right now because we're in a water issue again, or still. So the more compost we have, the more ground we're protecting, the more moisture we're retaining in our environment. We also don't need all the chemicals. We can reduce definitely the amount of chemicals that we use regularly. Modifies the soil temperature. I don't know if you've ever went out and put your hand on the soil. It's really hot. If you have a layer of compost down and move that compost aside and then put your head there, you're gonna notice a significant decrease in temperature. Which is course, if you're gardening, whether it's fruits or vegetables or flowers, you wanna keep that soil temperature down for better produce. Suppresses diseases. Compost has three natural fungicides in it. We all want to spend all the chemicals to buy the fungicides? We don't need to. Three of them right there in that little jar. So if you're gonna compost, I talked about nitrogen, that's our greens. That's the, kind of the activator in there. The types of things you can compost. Fruit and vegetable, coffee grounds and the filters, tea grounds. Now I have noticed that some of the new tea bags have plastic bags, not paper ones. You need to take it out of the plastic, no plastic. Weeds that have not gone to seed, I do not recommend you compost weeds that already have seeds on them. Deadheaded flowers, grass flippings, I don't encourage a lot of grass growing in Kingman, but if you do have some, you can use that. Outdated spices and herbs, eggshells, things left over in the refrigerator too long, maybe a little salad you didn't finish at dinner. The very, very wide range of things you can. All of those things you do wanna chop up into smaller pieces. You don't want them really bigger than about three inches. You can, it just takes twice as long for it decomposed. Because those little microorganisms that are in that jar, we can't even see them right now. They got little bitty mouths, they want little bitty bites. Okay, browns, carbon. Shredded newspaper. If it is, if the printer is using soy ink, you don't want any glossy paper or colored paper in there. Leaves, straw, napkins off the table, cardboard shredded up, wood chips. Again, they need to be chips and not big sticks. Leftover peat or coag. If you have an old pot that is no longer in use and you still have the soil, throw that back into compost and redupinate it. You know, you don't have to continually buy additional bags of potty soil. What not compost is probably the bigger issue. Dairy products, very, very minimal. If you have a little salad and there's a little salad dressing left on it, we're not gonna worry about it. But I'm not gonna go out there and take a, a whole container of sour cream and put it in the pile. Meats of any kind, oils, you don't want those in there. Bones because they don't disintegrate real fast. Fireplace ashes. Yeah, no, they're way too alkaline, and we're already out on the alkaline soil side. Charcoal briquettes, diseased plants, cat, dog, or bird feces. No product, no feces from a carnivorous type animal. Sawdust, you need to keep treated to a minimum because it compacts. When you're using leaves and newspaper, you also need to shred them and keep a very thin layer in there. So when you're doing the browns and the greens, you're making a layer. You're putting a layer of brown, layer of green, layer of brown, layer of green. We don't, we wanna avoid using grass that has rhizome roots, like Bermuda grass. It'll come back to haunt ya. Avoid using oleanders, palo verde, eucalyptus, black walnut, or salt cedar leaves. They do let off a chemical that is not friendly to growing other fruits and vegetables. Cat and human hair can be used in small amounts. Again, it mats. Yes, it is a source of protein, but it will mat and takes a little longer to decompose. Dryer lint, we don't want that because it contains fibers that will not, synthetic fibers that will not break down ever. The average compost pile is three feet by three feet by three feet. And that doesn't sound very big, but when you try and get enough brown and green ingredients to fill up that, it, ah, it's a challenge. It's a challenge. I got real lucky, and two times I saw them cleaning up the park, and they had big bags of leaves. I know they thought I was crazy. I threw those bags of leaves on my truck and took them home, and he's just looking at me like, okay, lady. But anyhow, so let's get down to something smaller that the average person can use. You can use an 18-gallon tote with the lid. Just drill holes in the side, the top, the bottom. Set it outside where it can drain in case you get too much moisture because the drainage from the compost will stain the patio. So you do not want it on your patio unless you have it sitting on something that can catch that moisture. You can also use as simple as a five-gallon bucket. Just drill your holes in it on the sides, top and bottom. The key to composting is to turn it. It needs to be turned. If you really, there is a compost thermometer that tells me if my pile's getting too hot or not heating up at all. For the average homeowner, that's really not necessary. You don't have to get into this big elaborate operation, but you can just use a simple five-gallon bucket and 18-gallon tote. That way you don't need so much. But when you put your new compost in it, you're gonna need to stir it up. Simple thing to do is just keep a little container on your counter and after dinner or one, every other day, take that out, add your compost, and water. I heard you make the comment. That is the hardest part about composting, keeping it moist. Because all the living organisms in my compost have to have water and air, just like we do. And if we don't turn it, if we don't keep it moist, they lose both, and we kill them. Most of the time, if you want to get it, a head start on the compost, you do not need to buy compost stimulator like they advertise. You can just go get you a couple scoops of native soil, throw it in there, and the microorganisms will be there. They kinda have a tendency to go to sleep, hibernate, when there's no moisture, no water. But you give them back some food and some moisture, and they'll come back to life. Do you have questions?
Hi, Linda. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
I think this is really great.
Well, I tried to simplify way too much.
Yes.
But, you know, the other thing that will help you too is if we keep it out of the landfill, that keeps the trash service down, that keeps the landfill down, that keeps the use of their equipment down. So it's got a multitude of beneficials. And if we just learn to grow more, all the time we have the trees and the plants and the vegetables, all that's sequesting our air. So it's cleaning our air at the same time. So, you know, you got a win-win situation going.
Yeah. I think this is a really, really great way that we can each do our part to help our city, to keep some of our trash out of the, out of the landfill. And we don't own our, our landfill here in our city, so we pay tipping fees to dump it. So I think that's something that each of us can do in our own, in our own homes to really help. I know our trash is cut down so much because, you know, you, you can still, there are some places that you can recycle in the community. Some items are still recyclable. And then you take out the, the, the yard trimmings and your food, and we don't have a whole lot of trash. So I know that it's really helpful.
Probably the thing that's missing the most is for people to be able to have a chipper.
Yeah.
Because you have to, you know, like the wood, lawn trimmings, some tree limbs, things like that. There, you know, most people don't have the facilities to be able to chip that up fine enough to use it.
Yeah.
So that would be a benefit to the community if that was available somewhere. There is a composting workshop this weekend.
Very nice. That was gonna be my next question. How can people come and, and really dig in deep and learn more about this?
They can call the extension office anytime, but there is a composting workshop this weekend at the Mojave County Library in their brand-new, beautiful facility, and we will go into a whole lot more depth about composting on that. And then next month, there is another workshop on herbs, and August, there is a workshop on hydroponics for your home. How you can grow indoor vegetables at your house, hydroponics with buckets.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
What time?
Thank you very much.
Oh, one o'clock is, uh, one o'clock is a composting workshop in the library.
Very nice. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Get my computer back on. All right, we'll move on to item four, to the old business, and our A is the event calendar.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'll just highlight some of the events that we had going this month. And we had the City Expo on the 10th, and thank to, thank you to those who attended that. We had a pretty good crowd and had some good conversations with some of our customers. So that's always a, a good informative event. And, and just, just for the commission's knowledge, you know, solid waste was accused of stealing the show because the garbage truck is always the most popular attraction at the City Expo. Good job.
I agree.
One other thing we worked on this week that probably isn't directly related to the commission, but the Public Works Department, Parks Department, and Fire Department established some temporary cooling stations around town this weekend in three of our parks. And those will be up and running through Sunday when the excessive heat warning expires. So proud of everybody for chipping in on that. And then just as a staff, solid waste will be working with the City of Kingman PIO to produce a informational video about solid waste services going forward. So hopefully we'll have that come out in the near future. For July, just a reminder that the Fourth of July fireworks are scheduled for the Fourth of July. So those are planned to be held at the fairgrounds. With the recent changes there, hopefully we can still pull everything together to, that, they'll go off with a bang, I guess. But that's about all I had. I don't know if any commissioners had any other, just to reiterate, I guess, of what Linda had talked about. There will be that composting workshop at the library at 1:00 on Saturday. And again, I don't know if any of the commissioners had any other events for us to note or publicize.
I just wanted to publicize real quickly. From the Adopta block, Adopta Park Adopta Trail Program, Kingman Main Street has adopted White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail. And trying to find my notes here, sorry, guys. It's the 17th. July 17, Saturday at 10:00 a.m., everyone is invited. Actually, I'm sorry. We changed the time to 8:00 a.m. because it's so hot right now. So July 17 on a Saturday at 8:00 a.m., everyone is welcome. Last time we had Ed from Colorado River Area Trail Alliance, and he did a basic trail maintenance presentation, how we can be good hikers and help to clean and maintain the trail. So he's gonna do another one of those. So 8:00 a.m., July 17, that's a Saturday.
At Wagon Wheel?
At, yes, White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trailhead.
And if anybody needs information on that location, it, I believe it's on the Parks website, there are trail maps of that area.
And that's monthly, you doing that? All right, anybody else got any additional events coming up that they know of? All righty. All righty, if there's nothing else there, we're going to four B, Community Outreach and Education.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, so this is an item that we added to the agenda. And as with our presentation today, we decided we would talk about outside individuals. We could have come in and teach us about things that kind of go towards the mission of the commission. And so I think today's presentation was excellent. And I don't know if anybody has anything in mind, if they've talked with anyone at any other events or organizations about any future presentations that we could try to arrange.
I would actually like to, although I can't do it next month, on the Biogas Digestor, which is a form of composting and stuff, I could probably whip up something for, I won't be here in July, so August, I could do that if, if you'd like, so.
That sounds interesting.
Maybe I'll have my Biogas Digestor set up by then.
Do a little demonstration, no?
You can come, you'd have to come visit because it's not very movable. So in August, I would be able to do that, so.
Okay.
I had a couple ideas. I had a couple ideas. One, I was wondering, and I could do a little homework on this, and maybe find somebody to give a presentation, but I think a lot of people are unsure how to continue recycling in our community without the public recycling program. So I wondered if we might reach out to, or I could, I would be happy to reach out to a couple of the private companies that are still doing recycling, as long as everyone is represented, and they could talk to the community about how you can still recycle in our community. And there's a new recycling program that's coming into this city as well. And so I just think it might be nice to have a short presentation on how people in the community can still recycle. Another thing I've been hearing a lot about is the code enforcement. And we had a really good presentation that one time. I wonder if they'd be willing to come back and give us a little refresher, just so people could hear what to do when things are going on in the neighborhood and who to call.
So I guess as we meet to set the agendas, we can figure out where those would fall in.
It sounds good.
All right, anybody, anything else with the community outreach and education? All righty.
I don't know if this is, but see, did you talk to Gene with regards to maybe putting up a table at Chilwell?
I have not, no. We will see him this Saturday, though, and we can talk to him about that. Along with what Sarah was saying about the code enforcement, we've had Neighborhood Services in to talk to us before, but I understand things have kind of changed in that where there's, is it the Fire Department handling weed control now, or that's kind of out of the Neighborhood Services jurisdiction, or am I wrong on that?
Yeah, I mean, there's been some shifting of responsibilities, but that's something we could cover in the presentation.
I was just wondering, maybe we had somebody from the Fire Department come in and give us something, what they do as far as letting people know that the weeds are getting up, or if they do anything, and what maybe we could do, how much we could do as far as any kind of notification that, hey, you know, you gotta, you take a good look at your front yard, sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm sure we can, we'll work with appropriate city staff to put together something.
Good.
I would like to see more, I know we only have a meeting once a month for, to discuss all this stuff, but if we could maybe reach out to other people, or even within ourselves, to do additional education classes or whatever at different events and stuff like that, that would be, we can cover more events that way and more information out to the public that way, as opposed to having to wait for a meeting. But we could schedule it here, but we can all discuss it at the other meetings. So I think that would be great if we're aware of other things going on that we can do that at, so that way we'll get more education done. All right, if that's it for that one, I think we'll move on to item C, which is Service to the Community Program.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I did not meet my deadline for this meeting, so I apologize. I do not have a draft waiver form. I was hoping to have that so we could review that. I think that's kind of, as far as program outline, that's kind of the critical point we're at. So I think once that's established, we know how that process would have worked with property owners or renters or volunteers, you know, each having waivers in place for all those people. And I guess I'll just give the overview since we've got a few folks in the audience. But the concept is that we would have, we would partner with service organizations to assist people who either didn't have the financial means or physical ability to clean up their property, and that the commission and city staff, along with these service organizations, would do, at least to start maybe on a quarterly basis, do a cleanup of someone's private property. So it sounds easy, but for us going on private property is a big deal. So we have a lot of t's to cross and I's to dial. So we're working up these waiver forms. Once those are established, and we've got a pretty clear outline of the program, then, you know, next step would be to start reaching out to some of our local businesses for donations of materials, tools, you know, those kind of things, PPE. And then we would start working with service organizations and local churches and other groups to help us identify people in need who would fit that category, and then hopefully provide some volunteers to assist us with those cleanups. So again, I'm the holdup, at the moment, I'm the holdup. So the waiver form, hopefully, I will have the draft for you next month. Right now, we've talked about, we're just calling this in general, our Service to the Community Program. We had talked about trying to find a little bit more lively name, so I'm still open for any suggestions that anyone would have. Please feel free to email me if you have any name suggestions, and we can review those at future meetings. And so that's about where we are right now. If anybody has any questions, I can try to answer them.
I have a question on the funding. If we get donations and stuff like that of bags, or pickers, or whatever, but if somebody wants to donate money, are we gonna be able to have that in a special account or something that's specifically for this program?
Yeah, I think we should be able to do that fairly easily. I mean, as the Public Works Department, we don't do that too much, but I know, like with the Parks Department, they do take donations. I think there would be a dedicated fund, and it would be dedicated to, you know, that purpose. We'd have to establish that in this case, but I think that's something we could get to. Thank you.
Are we in a position right now where you can start accepting funds or donations of any kind, or would you like to get the program rolling and kind of know what we need?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be asking for, until we have the program outline and have worked through to make sure we know how it's going to work, I wouldn't want to be asking for donations of money or materials at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Are we planning a meeting with the people who's going to participate in the program, different city agencies and organizations on the outside also, so we can kind of?
Yeah, I mean, my vision for it is that once we've got the program, you know, in place, and we're ready to go, that, you know, hopefully between city staff and the commission, you know, we'll have somebody speaking at every service organization group over, you know, a few month period, and reaching out to churches. And, you know, I think it's gonna take all of us to kind of go out there, and I think we'll just need, like I say, to have everything in place and have some literature on, you know, this is what we're gonna do, and this is how we're going to do it, and start signing up, you know. If we go talk to the Elks, hopefully, we come out of there with a list of 15 people who would be, you know, willing to volunteer, or, you know, have them keep a list of people who could be in need of that kind of service, and forward those to us as they go.
As far as volunteers, when we get the program on, are we going to have a safety briefing class, whatever, prior to the event? Are we gonna have one that will say, if they're volunteering on a recurring basis, that they've had the class, find the thing, and it's good for X amount of months or a year or whatever?
I think we'd probably do a combination of both. You know, I think as we go, you know, as we get people signed up to volunteer, I think we would do a class. But I think, you know, at every event, we would have a safety talk at the beginning, just the reminders of, do this, don't do that.
Very good.
What all we're doing, so we're not getting in, also, our volunteers aren't getting in over their heads on something.
This is skipping a little ahead without the waiver, but I was just remembering Phil Debin, our recycling mascot. And I was, it was kind of exciting for the community to come up with the names, and I wonder if there's some way we could kind of involve the community in naming the program, and maybe that might drum up some more volunteers. I don't know, it's just an idea. Might be a lot to actually...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd be interested in your suggestions first. I've just seen some naming contests that with social media get pretty weird. So I guess I'm a little leery of that, but we're open to suggestions.
I might reach out to the lady that named our trash can, though. She's good.
Rob, I have a question. So on the program, we've talked about this program for a while. Has it been submitted to the public in general if they're not here or one of our people that we know? Has it been submitted out for feedback at all?
No, I think we'd like to see, you know, from our end, you know, what we can do. We don't want to be overpromising and underdelivering, you know? That's the motto of Public Works Department. So, but we want to see what's possible, you know? And this is, like I say, this is something pretty different for us, and making sure that we're good on the insurance side and everything else, so workman's comp side and waivers and everything. See what we can do before we start putting it out there too much.
I got an FYI. Back when, oh gosh, 2014, 15, 16, when the Sandbox was doing their beautification committee, we were donated probably two pallets of ceramic tile, indoor/outdoor ceramic tile, and it never got used. And it's sitting in my yard, waiting for a place to put it. And so if anybody needs ceramic tiled work that we come across, and we got a tile layer willing to put it down, I got lots of tile I'll donate.
I think this is a great program. I'm really excited. So I'll, you know, do my part to try to see if we can find some people to participate. So thanks, it's really cool.
I actually think it'll be a lot of fun, because when you go down and you find a property that's really trashed, and you work and get it all cleaned up, it's like we clean up the debris. You wonder why you're out there, and then it's ugly trash, and then when you're done, it's beautiful. So it's instant gratification, which everybody likes nowadays. I'm really excited about getting that program underway, and looking forward to that and being a part of it.
That was the sort of thing we did when we had this beautification committee. We had gravel donated by a couple of the large quarries, and they delivered it, we spread it, and the property still looked good. It's been, what, six years, and it's still, they're taking care of it. Once it was done, the people, they enjoyed it, and they are taking care of it.
Great. That's what we want to happen. Anybody got anything else on that discussion? All right, we'll continue waiting on the waiver there. Like I say, I think everybody's looking forward to getting that going there. That'll be fun. All right, we'll go on to item five, new business. In A, we have a commission vacancy. We have one open position. Commissioner Hamilton decided to resign, saying they have a lack of time available to participate. So, and at this time, we have one prospective application, so we'll wait on whenever you submit that and get word back from it.
Yeah, I think we'll, I kind of want to take this opportunity just to announce it and to reiterate it. If you have any friends or people you know who may be interested, you know, remind them to put in their talent bank application. It's on the City of Kingman website, under Boards and Commissions, I believe, is where they are. And I thought that maybe we'd wait a month to see if we got any other ones, and then we'll take those to council for consideration.
Several pickup applications for the commission at their headquarters.
And I think we have room for one more person who doesn't live in the Kingman City area. So if you live outside of that, you can also apply to be on the commission, so. All right.
That application wasn't in our packet, was it?
I think there was one in there.
Was there? I must have missed it.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, the blank application.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got that. I was just looking for the other one. Okay.
All righty, so we'll wait here on that. And that brings us to item six, the announcement by commission members. And I think we'll start with Teresa.
Well, it's nice to see everybody, but nothing new for me. Thank you.
Thank you. See?
This Saturday, weather permitting, if it doesn't get so hot that it melts the tires from cars sitting still, there's Chilwell on Beale this Saturday. And the other thing, I don't know how many are aware, Jim Hinkley is starting up a new tour, a walking tour of the city of Kingman, the old town of Kingman and all the historic buildings, which will be at a party, it's about another month to two months out. There's still a few things to get settled on that. And so another good reason for cleaning up and getting old downtown looking good for people that want to do the walking tour. And there is some talk about doing a statue of Jim Hinkley that'll stand down by the Train Depot for the pigeons. That's all I got.
Thank you, See. Farrah?
I'm gonna piggyback off of your thing here. So Kingman Main Street is launching a new fundraising project with Jim Hinkley in partnership with Jim Hinkley, and I think it does have to do with beautification of Kingman. It is actually officially launched, and you can look up the project on kingman tours. It will be a historic walking tour with QR codes and kiosks in front of several historic buildings. So you'll be able to point your phone at the kiosk, and it will pop up, and you will hear Jim Hinkley's voice telling the history of all these different landmarks in our community. And there's several different sponsorship levels, but we will be really cleaning up different parts of the neighborhood to make it really beautiful. So kingman tours, the GoFundMe project is gonna be launched really soon, so thank you. See, that was perfect. Again, we hope to see you all at the cleanup on the 17th. And I wanted to remind everyone about the Adopta Park, Adopta Block, and Adopta Trail Program. So this we brought back after a little while of just needing to be revitalized, but now in addition to adopting a block, you can adopt a park or a trail. And so as a group of friends, or a community organization, or a business, you can adopt any of these things, and there's a really cool program. The applications are available at the Public Works Building.
Or on the city website.
Or also on the city website. So perfect. I did also want to say that I represented the Clean City Commission. It was a last-minute notice, so I'm sorry, I didn't let you guys know. She called me, she's begging us to show up. So last Friday, at the Diggett Community Garden, they had a recycling class for the kiddos. And so they had all kinds of recycled items, and they did an art project, and they really talked about minimal waste and how you can reduce and reuse. That was really what it was mostly about. And also, they now have cans at the Diggett Community Garden, and they're bins, excuse me, bins, and they're collecting aluminum cans, and all the money from that will go back to the garden. So if you have cans, they're in your hand. back to the garden. So, if you have cans that you're hanging on to, bring it over to the Diggit Community Garden.
Okay, for other aluminum cans, Hinkley, right?
Just, just soda pop cans, or beer cans, or V8 cans, or what they're collecting.
Okay, those kinds, okay, those type.
All right. Kathy, do you have anything? All right. All right, I have, I have a couple items. One, one of them, we mentioned the last meeting there for the Golden Valley Cactus Cleaners. Facebook came out a couple of years ago and sent a crew out here and did a video of us doing a cleanup out there in Golden Valley. And that's, you can watch that. It's only like two minutes long on, if you go to Community Voices on Facebook and put in the Golden Valley Cactus Cleaners, you'll be able to do that. But, then afterwards, they did a book on that, which basically is showing some of the things that were in the video, and it's highlighting multiple people and organizations that are doing good things for, I forgot that, I was trying to get to there, because I got a name I need. So, if you're, if you're interested in, I have this up here, and we can do that, and now they won't, I need, I need to look up some information, so I turn my phone back on, and of course, I get a call.
That's okay.
Also, and the reason I had that on, I was looking for, we have a new cactus cleaner group that formed down in, around Phoenix area. It's Fountain Reserve Cactus Cleaners, I believe it is, there. So, that makes Dolan Springs Cactus Cleaners, Golden Valley, and now the one down in Phoenix. So, we're hoping that catches on more wider. I'm still looking for people in Kingman and Mojave Valley area. So, I need somebody, a coordinator, to do that, to help clean up the area. And that's all I have.
Well, if I may, I guess I just have one announcement. I know we're, we're coming up on, and I, I know we're coming up on vacation season, and everybody's looking forward to making trips. But, if you are not going to be available over any of the upcoming months, if you could let us know, so we could try to plan, you know, if we're not going to have a quorum, we could cancel a meeting ahead of time rather than showing up and finding out we're not going to have a quorum. So, if you're planning on being gone, you know, anytime over the rest of the summer or into the fall, if you could let us know, so we could plan a little ahead on if we're going to have, you know, if we need to cancel away meetings or not. So, thank you.
That reminded me, I won't be available physically at the meeting in July. I'll be in, but I should be, hopefully, available by phone, and I'll phone in. You may have to run the, run the thing. It's easier, I think, if you run it from here, rather than me to try to run it on YouTube. So, that one, I definitely know I'll, I'll be out of the area. So, but I will tune in for the scheduling and that kind of stuff. All right. If that's all we have, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.